Board of Education Meeting and Budget Workshop. If you could please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I'd like to call to order the call to order of the regular meeting of the Kings Park Board of Education. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded. So we're going to start the meeting tonight with some presentations. Oh, I do have to just advise everybody that Mrs. Caprianco is not here tonight. And Dr. Egan is going to be acting as our district clerk. And also Mr. Two is unable to be with us here in San Remo. He is going to try to join us later during the meeting. So now we'll get on to our presentations. We're going to do presentations for the teachers of the year and for scope awards.
Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome. The New York State Teacher of the Year Program is now in its 51st year. It's one of the oldest and most prestigious teacher of the year programs in the country. And I do apologize that it took us this long to honor last year's teacher of the year. I'm happy that we're finally able to do this remotely and deliver these awards and give our teachers the special recognition that they so deserve. I'm fortunate to work with some amazing talented teachers who just go above and beyond, you know, especially during a pandemic and have really done a wonderful job for students. We're going to start with our tallest teacher of the year and work our way down in height order. So I'd like to personally congratulate Mr. Paul Eager, who is the teacher of the year at Kings Park High School. And I'd like to welcome Mr. Huntsman to the mic. You can unmute, and I know Mr. Huntsman has a few words to say about Mr. Eager on his behalf.
Thank you very much, Dr. Egan, and to the Board of Ed for the opportunity to recognize an absolutely fantastic teacher. On behalf of Dr. Lesler, Mr. Ramalito, Mr. Gialardi, who are joining us here tonight, we honor Mr. Eager. Mr. Eager has been a member of the Kings Park Teaching Community since 2005. Since September of 2014, he has led our symphonic winds as well as our Kings Park High School marching band. In that time, Mr. Eager has masterfully created a home for so many students in the Kings Park High School Music Wing. As one of his students wrote, "He knows every face in the music department and always greets them with a smile. I have never walked through the band room without hearing 'A Good Morning' or 'Have a Good Weekend.'" This sense of family is exemplified when you listen to him speak at senior recognition. He speaks from the heart and is able to share very specific details about how each senior has played an important role in the marching band. Under the direction of Mr. Eager, Kings Park High School consistently has students who earn significant musical achievements, including NISMAs, Majors Level 6 Gold with Distinction, National, All Eastern, and All-State Musicians. In regards to his excellence with the Kings Park High School Marching Band, a colleague shared, "I cannot remember a time when the band's performances were more polished and more professional, and he has brought such excitement to the group for all of his students." These accomplishments are the result of countless hours of rehearsals, beginning at summer band camp and continuing on evenings all throughout the year. Kings Park is very proud to have Mr. Eager as our teacher of the year. Our PFA will be presenting him with a gift later this week to acknowledge his tremendous accomplishments. Mr. Eager, you are an absolutely wonderful person. You are such an asset to Kings Park High School. Congratulations, very well deserved.
Thank you all very much. It is a pleasure and an honor to work in Kings Park. It's wonderful to be part of the community, both at large and, of course, in the school community. The amount of doors that have been opened and the experiences that I've had in my 15 years here in the district, I know the last lifetime. Thank you all very much. It's very much appreciated, and I look forward to many more years of success.
Congratulations, Mr. Eager, and thank you, Mr. Huntsman. Our next teacher of the year is at William T. Rogers Middle School, Bridget Keenan. Bridget retired from us last June, and I'm very excited that she's able to join us on this Zoom call this evening. And to say a few words about Mrs. Keenan, we have Principal Laura Moreno.
Good evening, everybody. Before her retirement in June, Miss Bridget Keenan had been a dedicated member of the Kings Park family since 1987. Her passion for the physical education and health curricula, her students, and social-emotional learning in general combined daily to create exciting and engaging atmosphere wherever she was, whether she was in a classroom, a gymnasium, on the athletic fields. Miss Keenan continually promoted literacy and personal improvement, and she still is a role model for everybody around her. She always was and will be. As an educator, she worked to improve upon her instruction through just thoughtful reflection and continually strive to infuse new and innovative concepts into her teaching. She worked with passion and purpose to create a supportive community within each of the classrooms she was in. And every space that you go in when Bridget Keenan is in there, she just makes you feel welcome and supported at all times. And our students really felt that every day at William T. Mrs. Keenan recognized when another person really needs an advocate. She always did and still does. Her work in fundraising to help others and in being a voice for those who really need one enriched the lives of her students and inspired all of us daily. She is truly and was truly a gift to the Kings Park community. We are so proud to have worked alongside of her for so long each day. Congratulations, students, Keenan. We miss you, and we hope you're enjoying retirement. I know that you are because I spoke with you today. It sounds like you're having a wonderful retirement, but we miss you every single day at William T. Congratulations.
All right, our third teacher of the year at RJO is Mrs. Erin Robalata, fifth grade teacher. Congratulations, Mrs. Robalata. And speaking on her behalf is her principal, Mr. Rudy Massimo.
Good evening, and congratulations to all the staff being recognized tonight. It's my pleasure tonight to be able to recognize Erin Robalata for her outstanding accomplishments. Erin has demonstrated through her many years with us at RJO her exceptional teaching and leadership qualities. Her creative approach to individual learning, instruction, understanding of children, and implementation of technology make her a master at her trade. From the onset of RJO's technology initiatives, Erin became one of the first members of our staff to integrate tech tools into her classroom. While transitioning into the use of a smart board, she started using different apps and programs with children and parents. Google Suite, Kahoot, Smart Notebook, Smart Response, Choreograph, and Pair Deck are among a few of the tech tools introduced. She became so fluent in the use of various media that she was asked to present those programs to staff during conference days. She became a math and science teacher leader, the go-to person for grade five. Erin was one of the first teachers to implement internet resources aligned with our math series. Her knowledge of the curriculum was highlighted when Erin presented the Envision Program to parents at parent university. Her educational technology background and her willingness to embrace her new technology has afforded her the opportunity to create a truly interactive classroom. As a co-teaching partner, Erin's instruction, collaborative nature, effectiveness with students of all levels made her team, sorry, her team, a model for all others. Erin Robalata's experiences extended far beyond the classroom and included spelling bee moderator, RJO math Olympiad advisor, school musical director, union representative, conference day presenter, math and science club advisor, the list goes on. To quote a student, "Miss Robalata is one of those teachers that you will never forget, not only for the lessons she taught, but because you left her classroom knowing she wanted the best for you." It is my honor and my privilege to call Erin my colleague and friend and to be able to recognize her as the RJO teacher of the year. Congratulations, Erin.
Thank you so much. I love everything about RJO, and I love teaching there, and I love teaching at my dining room table. I just love RJO so much more.
Congratulations, Mrs. Robalata. Our fourth teacher of the year at Parkview Elementary School is Mrs. Maureen Hanley, a reading teacher at Parkview. And speaking on her behalf is her principal, Mr. Kevin Storch.
Thank you, Dr. Egan, and thank you, Board of Ed. It is my pleasure this evening to talk with you about an amazing teacher at Parkview. That's Mrs. Maureen Hanley. Mrs. Hanley has served Kings Park Central School District in a variety of positions since 1997. Mrs. Hanley has a record of superior teaching experience, such as a reading teacher at both William T. Rogers Middle School and currently at Parkview. Her background as a speech clinician, as well as her training in Orton, Gillingham, and Wilson have provided her with the essential skills to teach students who struggle with reading. Maureen attended Columbia University with a focus on students with dyslexia and other language-based learning difficulties related to reading. Mrs. Hanley holds her students to high expectations for learning. Students who are fortunate to have Mrs. Hanley as a teacher know that she cares deeply about them, and as a result, they work very hard for her. Students in Mrs. Hanley's class grow and learn as a result of her high expectations. Some students' reading skills improve faster than others, but all students eventually find success in her classroom. Maureen is a talented and dedicated member of the Parkview family, but what really makes her special is her love for learning and teaching. Her willingness to work as a member of a team and share ideas for the good of all is admirable. Maureen has wit, energy, and a positive upbeat spirit that makes her a pleasure to work with. All of us at Parkview are very proud of Mrs. Hanley as our Parkview's teacher of the year. Congratulations, Maureen.
Thank you so much. I have been honored to work in Kings Park for as long as I have. I was a student there, and I've been lucky enough to work at this fantastic district. And I've been lucky to work in almost every building as well. So I am so honored. This is the biggest honor I could ever have, ever have gotten. So thank you all. I'm, congratulations to everyone else as well. Thank you.
And congratulations, Mrs. Hanley. Just so the board and the public is aware, each one of our teachers of the year received a solid red glass apple from the school district and an engraved base that they can proudly display on their desk or in a prominent place in their classroom, like their fireplace in the back of the classroom at RJO. And we're happy to present them to our teachers. Our final teacher of the year is Mrs. Victoria Gentile from Fort Solanga. Not only is she the teacher of the year of Fort Solanga, she was also selected as the Kings Park Central School District nominee to the state-level competition, where she was not only named a finalist, but runner-up to the New York State Teacher of the Year. Speaking on her behalf is her principal, Mrs. Stephanie Montacabla.
Good evening. Congratulations to all of the recipients this evening. It is my pleasure, and to start with a quote by Anthony Biglan, which he states, "The quality of human life, perhaps even survival of life as we know it, depends upon finding ways to make everyone's environment less coercive and more caring and supportive of human development and focuses on what works." This epitomizes Mrs. Gentile's approach within our classroom. Because of the effort she has put forth with her students and their families, they are able to make tremendous gains in every aspect of their young lives. Mrs. Gentile began teaching with the Kings Park Central School District in 2002. At the time, the model for the applied behavioral classroom was in its infancy and not well-known to the general public. Because of her love for children, Mrs. Gentile sought to receive her behavioral analysis license. This included behavioral function assessments of her students and the setup of intervention plans, the creation of curriculum based upon the individual needs of her students, and research-based parent training that extends into the home. She worked tirelessly as an advocate for this particular population. She has helped organize assemblies for students within our school and created a program for the children to experience what it would be like to have autism. She also assists her fellow colleagues when they are having a difficult time managing their students' behaviors. She is a wealth of knowledge, and her expertise is appreciated and valued by all. She has worked with outside support organizations, such as Therapy Dogs of Long Island. These dogs provide the support that her children need and helps a nonverbal youngster articulate words and make eye contact. The program has been such a success at Fort Solanga, it has recently been filtered to other schools within the district as well as surrounding school districts. Perhaps her greatest achievement to date was to plan and advocate for the building for a state-of-the-art sensory lab. Not only did she research and design the room, she fought the funding to support it. The intent of this room is used to calm and relax and stimulate exploration. It helps individuals with sensory processing disorders and cognitive and learning disabilities to process the world around them. One of her fellow peers was quoted saying, "Victoria exemplifies all that Fort Solanga Elementary School is about: acceptance, hard work, kindness, and a true love for teaching. She works with some of the most challenging students, yet is always patient, optimistic, and makes learning fun. Our school would just not be the same without her." I echo this sentiment. In all of the years that I've been here in district, I have never come across someone like Victoria. She is an individual who has a love for her community, her colleagues, parents, and more importantly, her students. It is with a grateful heart that I had the opportunity to cite just a few of her many attributes. I would be remiss, and according to Victoria, if I did not mention the support staff, the wonderful ladies who assist Victoria. She is consistently telling me she would not have been where she is without these ladies by her side. That just speaks volumes about Victoria. Congratulations to my dear friend, colleague, Fort Solanga Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Kings Park Central School District Teacher of the Year, and New York State Runner-Up for Teacher of the Year. Love you.
Thank you very, very much. I feel honored to have this honor, and I just want to say I love Kings Park and I love my job. Thank you.
I would just like to, I would just like to, on behalf of the board, congratulate all of the recipients of the Teacher of the Year Awards. We are so fortunate to have you in our district. We appreciate you so much. Thank you for everything that you do.
And Victoria, Victoria received from the district a plaque, and we print up duplicate plaques that are proudly displayed in our boardroom at Kings Park High School. So at some point, when we're able to hold board meetings back in the boardroom again, you'll see Victoria's wonderful plaque hanging up there with the five or six other plaques that are already prominently displayed. Congratulations to all five of our teachers of the year. And we have one more round of prestigious staff and community awards to give out this evening, and those are the Scope Awards. So Scope Educational Incorporated is an education organization that's located in Smithtown, and they support a lot of the great work that school districts do across Long Island. And each year in March, they permit school districts to nominate up to five individuals in five different award categories to be recognized. And we're going to recognize those individuals tonight as well. The first individual was the administrator nominee and award recipient, Mr. Ken Farazzi, Assistant Principal at William T. Rogers Middle School. Mr. Farazzi began his career in the Kings Park Central School District in 1999 as an elementary teacher. During his 20-year tenure in Kings Park, Mr. Farazzi has served as a teacher, athletic director, and assistant principal at the elementary, middle school, and high school levels. Mr. Farazzi works diligently with all stakeholders to meet the needs of our students. His compassion for and dedication to our students is simply unvending and inspiring. Mr. Farazzi approaches every unique student situation with empathy, fairness, and innovation. He is a visionary with extremely strong intuition who is always looking for new ways to improve our practices. Mr. Farazzi is an extremely valued member of our administrative team, and that's why we recommended him to receive this award. Congratulations, Mr. Farazzi.
Thank you very much. I share this, obviously, with all the administrators that I've worked with there as deserving, not more than me, but I thank you all very much.
Congratulations. The second award is, it's called the Community Service Award, and this year's recipient is Mrs. Jennifer Brozier. Congratulations, Mrs. Brozier. Mrs. Brozier is the president of the Kings Park High School Parents and Faculty Association, PFA, and chairperson for our Kingsman Cafe concession stand. The cafe is the primary source of funds for the Kings Park Athletic Boosters Association. Mrs. Brozier is also past president of the middle school PFA. Over the past many years, Mrs. Brozier has volunteered countless hours in our schools and in the community. She rejuvenated our cafe, and she has recruited several high school students to assist in the operations of that facility. Mrs. Brozier is a caring, student-centered, and dedicated person, and we are fortunate to benefit from her leadership and volunteerism here in Kings Park. Congratulations, Mrs. Brozier.
Thank you. I appreciate the acknowledgement.
And I have a plaque for you, which I promise to drop off in the coming days.
Thank you. It's appreciated.
The third award is the School Board Service Award, and this year's nominee and recipient is our very own Mr. Dan Chu. Mr. Chu has served as a trustee on the Kings Park Central School District Board of Education since 2016. He was overwhelmingly re-elected to a second term in 2019. Mr. Chu serves on the board's legislative and policy committees. As an airline captain for a major air carrier, Mr. Chu brings a natural calm and even keel to our meetings and discussion. He is a deep thinker who is always focused on the needs of our students. As a lifelong Kings Parker, Mr. Chu has deep-rooted connections with the Kings Park community, which is a vital asset to the board and school district. It is my pleasure to serve Kings Park with Mr. Chu. Congratulations, Mr. Chu. We have two awards left. This next award is the Support Staff Recognition Award, and this individual and the recipient is Mr. Edward Demala. Mr. Demala has worked in the Kings Park Central School District since 1996. He has been the district's chief custodian since 2013. Mr. Demala is both a district graduate and resident, and thus he has very strong ties to the community. He is extremely knowledgeable, hardworking, and a consummate professional. He routinely puts in the extra effort that the school district and community needs to ensure that events and projects are completed properly. For example, when a student at our RJO Intermediate School was tragically killed a few years ago, Mr. Demala devoted numerous hours to design and build a garden, which was later named Holly's Garden in her honor. He meticulously maintains this area 12 months a year. We are a better school district because of Mr. Demala. Congratulations, and well-deserved, Mr. Demala. And last but not least, we have a Teacher Service Award that we're able to give out as well. And this award also went to our Teacher of the Year, Victoria Gentile. Victoria has been employed in the Kings Park Central School District since 2002. As a behavior analyst and special education teacher, she currently teaches developmentally disabled elementary students in an 811 setting. This past year, Mrs. Gentile single-handedly orchestrated the creation of a sensory lab. This past year, Mrs. Gentile single-handedly orchestrated the creation of a sensory lab at her school. She acquired the funding through a community donation and worked with her building principal and facilities and technology departments to see this wonderful project to fruition. As stated by one of her peers, "Victoria exemplifies all that Fort Solanga Elementary School is about: acceptance, hard work, kindness, and true love for teaching." Victoria is the 2019-2020 Kings Park Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Victoria.
Again, on behalf of the board, I want to congratulate all of our Scope Award winners. Again, we have such a wonderful district, and we want to thank everyone for everything that you contribute to the Kings Park School District on behalf of the children and the community. Thank you very much.
Doing some fast math, six of our recipients are Kings Park School District graduates. I'm very proud of that. Thank you.
It is the trend in Kings Park, right?
Yes.
Okay, so next, we're going to move on to our budget workshop.
All right, if you give me two seconds, I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, so, good evening, everybody. I'm back with what we call our first look at next year's budget. It's typically our December budget meeting, where we start doing some projections in terms of our 2021 2022 school district budget. And you'll see there our historic budget data. We've been fortunate. We've kept our increases relatively small. Over the past 10 years or so, the largest budget-to-budget increase was 4.09%.